Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's January 8th. And we're meeting for the 13th time during this fiscal year. And I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And the people at the table will introduce themselves if they care to.
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Emily Martin, head business planning board.
Tim Czerwinski, assistant town planner.
Emily Ennis, member.
Brian Ferris, member.
All right. We're going to meet again on January 22nd. And on February 12th thereafter. And then on February 26th unless someone has an issue with those dates.
I will not be in the country on the 26th.
All right. Well, you can raise that issue.
Do that later on?
Later on.
That's fine.
The past minutes, we're going to defer until the meeting of the 22nd so everyone can have plenty of time to consider them. Now, the next order of business is citizen speak. And citizens who have matters of interest to the planning board should feel free to speak at citizen speak. However, we will not receive comments on the Thayer Nursery application at citizen speak because we're going to have a public hearing. And we would like any comments to be part of the record of the public hearing. And citizen speak is an informal part of the meeting. And what is said does not become a part of the record. So any citizens, would any citizens like to speak? Yes. Come and speak into the microphone. Let me warn you, you're being recorded and televised.
Is that good? My name is Anna Mandell. I'm on 4 Hawthorne Road. And I'm here, I attended the working meeting last night about the specific properties that need help in Milton as well as condo conversions and potentially townhouses. I'm specifically talking about the Stoughton residence. I heard there's a bylaw for a bed and breakfast. And I feel, or I would love for that to be put in place as soon as possible. The Stoughton residence is for sale. They also brought down the price today to just over $1 million. So this is really urgent matter if it doesn't want to be bought up by the wrong people. And I would propose some type of luxury bed and breakfast. And that's just all I wanted to say tonight.
Well, the warrant for May is closed.
I had intended to bring one forward for October for B and B.
So we're thinking October. How does that sound to you?
I mean, as long as it's something that's workable and feasible with the town. If I were to purchase it, I wouldn't want like little finicky issues to be brought up because like the big scale, it's saving the property and the list of the, on the condo conversion, it would solve most of those problems with the B and B. As long as the town would be willing to work with me on that, I'd feel much more comfortable about purchasing it. But because it doesn't exist, I wouldn't want to be caught up later on having put in money into it and then being expected to be able to run it, all of a sudden saying, oh, well, it doesn't exist, it's not going to exist. Here you are with a property that you can't run out, you can't make money off of, and that won't sell for over a year or more on this market.
Do you have experience with that business, Spenny Chance?
With a bed and breakfast? No, but I mean, you hire someone to do it.
Well, it does seem to me that your proposal in that you've got a hotel-sized building to begin with.
Right.
Rather than a, you know, a little.
Yeah. And it's on a really small lot, so it's very limited. And there's a very beautiful view. And I know at the condo conversion, there was like, can you fit multiple things on it? And honestly, you can't fit much of anything besides that building there. So you could be looking at someone coming in and tearing it down. And that's really sad for a historical function. And I don't even know if anyone would want to tear it down. But.
Yes.
The board had discussed a few meetings ago its process for looking at all of the zoning articles for the October town meeting, which would involve some public meetings this spring. So I would urge you to be involved with that. Bed and breakfast will definitely be one of the articles that I will bring forward. There's a list of others that we've all either been talking about or working on for the last couple of months, basically. So keep an eye out for that.
But what do you think about the general idea that has been rooted?
It's too general to comment on. I mean, the idea of allowing bed and breakfast in general in Milton, one of the reasons for doing that was to help save larger buildings. The condo conversion is another possible way of doing that.
Yeah.
So certainly it fits in with the general purpose of what we were thinking about. Obviously, the other part of allowing B and Bs is that there's a reasonable assumption that there would be a market for it here, given Curry College, given its proximity to Boston. So that'd be the other reason. We've gone back and forth a little bit about what the requirements would be for that. One of them that we had talked about was owner occupancy. So that's something to keep in mind. Signage, noise, there's a couple of other things that we haven't come to agreement with in the past. But I think the public meeting structure we were talking about for all of the zoning articles would help flesh out some of those before we get to our own public hearing, probably about July or so.
But in the, in our minds' eye, in my minds' eye at least, it seems to me that what you propose, I like the idea of a big building rather than just someone's single family house where they say, let's.
Print a room.
But let's, I mean, as I say, it's sort of a hotel-sized building. And preserving such a building makes sense.
Absolutely.
There's historic preservation. I mean, I think that you've got the pieces of making as strong a case for a bed and breakfast by law as can be made. And you know, it may be that we may not want to have them crop up like mushrooms, but.
Yeah, there are different ways of restricting it. Certainly, one of the other things would be, can the site accommodate parking for all the uses on site? And so any, any land and building where the guests would have to park on the street isn't going to be suitable. So that starts to argue for a larger piece of property and a larger house anyway to convert. And that would go well with what you're thinking about. So.
And the, I mean, the condo conversion part, it could fit there also, but you have to take in mind that you would end up losing a lot of the beautiful architecture, especially on the first floor. And whether or not that's something that's of interest. And so for the bed and breakfast, I mean, it's just a question of creativity, to be honest. How creative can you be? How can you shade the cars so you can't really see them?
Right. Buffering would be a key element. Probably some sort of restricted signage. Bed and breakfast is breakfast only. It's not, you know, providing dinner. And so that would come into it. So, and there are a number of towns that have good regulations on this. Length of stay is another one that we've talked about here on the planning board, is how do you keep it from being something where people are staying for three months at a time, but really more like the hotel, the shorter term.
Yeah. And I mean, my worry is that there could be something like an Airbnb-type thing with it. And so that would be a temporary thing. And there's not much that would prohibit that either at the moment.
Not at the moment.
And then, but Airbnb is still new, and there are laws that can come in and reinforce it different ways. So that's just one other aspect to keep in mind with those types of residences.
So we've given you some comfort.
Yeah, a little bit. Still got to happen. And I mean, it's still in October.
We'd be thrilled to work with you and see if we can't have.
Great.
I mean, I'm sure that we can get a, an article to present to the town meeting. And then, of course, you would have to convince them, we would help, that the article should be passed. So there's some work there, but.
I think, I mean, if it's something that is of real interest, it's just having a list of everything that I would need to get done would be the first real step. Because this is a very special property, so it doesn't follow the normal bylaws or any of the normal special things. And so just really knowing what I would need to have and who would be able to help with it would be really great information.
Does Bill have your phone number and email address?
Yes.
Okay, great. So.
Ed, would you please tell me the address you're talking about?
704 Brush Hill Road.
You call it the Stoughton Staub House?
Yes.
Great house.
It's a beautiful.
Beautiful house.
Okay. We, I guess, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, the other one thing that could be considered is like a temporary add-in to the condo conversion along similar standards, but it might extend it too much.
And they'd come forward at the same time anyway.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
I still feel the bang.
All right. Now, we're going to address the principal matter of the evening, which is an application for a special permit for the Thayer Nursery to conduct a landscaping business. And the application is on file. And what I see the procedure for tonight being is that we will have a presentation from the Thayer Nursery. And then I would suggest we get, we go directly to the public rather than have the board spend hours working without having heard from the public. Let's hear from the public first. And then after that, but not tonight, we will, well, I mean, we may do some of it tonight. We're not going to vote on this application tonight. But we're going to hear from whoever would like to be heard from.
Josh, can we leave the public portion of the meeting open while we're in discussions?
Yeah, it's going to be open. It's going to be kept open.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay. So, Mr. Cochrane, without further ado, why don't you tell us what this is all about?
Good evening, members of the, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here on behalf of Josh and Maggie Oldfield and the Thayer Nursery. This is, I guess, the first night of the next step in efforts to reintroduce the landscaping business at the Thayer Nursery property on Hillside Street in Milton. It's a longstanding business that has been forced to sever some of its operations to operate from Canton. And we're here in response, I think, to an overwhelming vote of support from town meeting and from the town of Milton to re, allow that business to be reintroduced under tighter conditions than what previously were in place. I do have a PowerPoint presentation if we can get to it.
You're trying to turn the lights off?
Nope. I'm waiting for the to warm up.
Oh.
And I am joined at the table by the principals, Josh and Maggie Oldfield, who operate the nursery and the landscaping business.
Can everyone back there hear? Mr. Cochrane?
Yes.
Good. I tend to, my voice tends to go, so if you don't, please make sure that you prod me to keep my voice up. Can you see that with the light on or with the light off? Probably with the light off.
You're on one and one.
Perfect.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay, so.
Sir?
All right. Let's hope this works. So here we are. This is the aerial of the neighborhood at 10,000 feet. Just to quickly orient, I think everybody here knows where we are, but this is Randolph Avenue. This is Hillside Street. This is Forest Street. This is the area where primary portion of the nursery is located. Parkwood Drive is here, and Harland is here. And then here's a sort of a closer look of the main property. And then this is the other property that's located across the street where they do some ancillary components of their business. But primarily, we're focused on this property. And this is a look more closely historically. This is an aerial that was taken from Google Earth in August of 2013 that showed how the property was operated previously. All of the landscaping operations were sort of towards the easterly side. This was the mulch pile that I highlighted previously. A hard-packed, dense area, very, barely pervious in nature in terms of the ability to absorb water. A dusty, loud, and a difficult place, particularly for neighbors. The plan, as presented through the development of the bylaw and the presentation at the town meeting, is to relocate those functions, is to replant this area, relocate functions to this area, fence it, and make it much more quieter, much more quiet, much less difficult for surrounding properties to live with. This was a plan that we showed dated April 23. This was shown to town meeting as the proposed conditions planned with berm and fencing, new planted area and whatnot. It's been updated a little bit. And so the plan that was filed with the application, again, a little difficult to see. What we've done is we've broken it down into smaller sections, shows, again, this is Hillside Street, Forest Street, that most of this area over here becomes planted. And all of the proposed operations associated with the landscaping area is in this area in what they call a land care yard. This is a detail which unfortunately is difficult to pick up here. But you see a series of, this is the big wood barn. This is a series of bins where various materials would be stored, mulches, stone dust, other materials that would be available for delivery to customers and/or for retail sale at the site. And a larger set of bins located on the other side of this yard with all of the operations to occur in here. There is a, shows a sort of circular pattern, one-way pattern for trucks as they enter, generally to come in, come around the barn, and back into here so that there's not a constant amount of backing and the backup light, beeper, from the backing of the trucks. This is sort of a current look from the southerly border, the Lepore border, is here, looking at the barn, the series of bins that would be placed in this area, and another series, the larger bins placed over here with the pattern of trucks coming around. And then fencing installed, as we'll show in a moment, along this boundary line. This is an example of material bins that would be placed alongside the barns. It would be sort of stone, separated bins. And as shown on the, on the plan, although you can't see it, there are proposed to be sprinklers at each end of the material to make sure that they don't overheat, that they stay moist in hot weather, so it doesn't dry and dust. There are, in fact, a total of 20 sprinklers that would be proposed, some existing, some additional proposed, for the entire site to manage dust and to, obviously, as necessary to help them irrigate for trees and other products growing on the nursery as well. And this is another example of material bins as placed up against another barn. Is that Bunny? That's Bunny, this is Bunny Thomas's material bin on property that's over off of, on Randolph Currently, this was taken last winter. This is looking at the Lepore property. It's pretty wide open. There is vegetation, but as you can see, mostly deciduous, all on Lepore's property. Some placement of some evergreens in here that is proposed to be modified with a fence that would run along that side. That fence would be eight feet tall, would be set 15 feet in from the Lepore property line, and would run 270 feet approximately from the farther side of the rear of the barn over to a point that is almost to Forest Street. It would be, the exterior face of it would look sort of ornamental, cedar material with longitudinal wood. The interior face would have that supporting structure showing. But upon that surface will be placed a sound attenuation material. There's some materials that we presented with the, we presented with the package, but it is a sound barrier system that would be set at eight feet. This is just an example of what, how it is hung on a fence. The sound is, in accordance with the description that we obtained from the engineer, from the, that we dealt with, it would reduce at a minimum the volume of sound by 50%. And the range of reduction is based significantly on sort of the range of pitch or decibel and cycle of the nature of the sound. So the higher the sound, the higher the pitch, the more of a treble-like sound, the attenuation is greater. The lower the pitch, sort of the bass sound is, is less. That's a 50%. It increases or decreases on a range. And so the way it was described to me is that if someone comes along with a, driving one of those cars where it's, they've got the loud noise, the loud music, you hear the bass. And you hear the bass because you feel the bass. It's more of a vibration in the air. And you don't hear the treble because the treble sound is blocked by the, by the interior insulation of the vehicle. So in any event, at least 50% of that will be attenuated associated with this barrier. There will be, and there has been some drainage work done. There's a drainage trench that's proposed to be installed along, or has been installed along the southerly line that would, the plan of which is to redirect, the fear is that if, without that drainage thing with the new berming and fencing, that it would, that drainage, stormwater coming down the hill of Forest Street that normally now comes across the property might get redirected into the Lepore property. And so the purpose of the trench is to catch that and to bring it along to a point on the other side of the barn, just beyond the end of the fence, come across to a catch basin or detention basin set now in this, in the area on the other side of the barn, and it will discharge into the ground. In conjunction with that, with the removal of a lot of this pervious, the dense, thick pervious surface, there will be much better capacity for the ground to absorb groundwater. And then finally, the, Josh has met with Joe Lynch, the town engineer, and John Thompson. They've agreed to allow the installation of a catch basin on the northeasterly corner of the property to tie into the town's drain system within Hillside Street. And so that's an additional provision that we were working on, but hadn't, hadn't reached conclusion with the town engineer that will further pull drainage because the general flow of water is sort of southwesterly to northeasterly in that direction as it comes across. The topography generally runs in that direction. So some photographs of the installation of the drain. It's two feet deep, three feet deep. Three feet deep with a pervious liner, with a pervious liner, with some thick, heavy rocks initially, followed by smaller, finer rock. And then this is the installation here that would be covered with dirt and some vegetation planted on top. But it would, it would act as a French drain and bring it down from Forest Street, coming down towards the back of the barn. This shows former work area on the easterly side of the barn with the Rojo Henning property here, that's their swimming pool. All-new grow-out area proposed. Some of that has been installed recently. Josh has further, there's a low level, there's a low swell in here that has been widened and increased in size to better manage some of the stormwater and to capture stormwater before it has a chance to leave the property, be redirected in this direction, ultimately tying into the new drain, the new manhole and connection to the town's drain system. But the fact that this is now becoming pervious, pervious surface with grow-out area means that it will manage stormwater on that area of the property much better than what it had done before. We think it'll be a significant improvement as to how stormwater is managed. And so this is the work that's been recently done to widen that drainage, that swell area. And there's an installation now of a new retaining wall, a stone retaining wall, and some new berming on the, this is the property line here to the Rojo Henning property. This is back towards the barn. And the plan now is to install a fence found in a concrete pilings in this area with the top of fence to be at an elevation of what we call 194. So on the plan, the site plan, difficult to see, but the topography is shown on the town's, on the GIS mapping, the elevation at this point on the ground is at elevation 182. It's, it's the same, excuse me, 184. The elevation of the, shown on the Cole property and the Rojo Henning property as you cross over the fencing is at 182. The plan is to install a cedar fence similar to the one proposed for the Lepore property line that would be, the peak of that fence would be a constant 194. So it would be 12 feet effectively above the 182 property level at the rear of the property, the Rojo Henning property. This is another picture of the same site and a third. This is a photograph of a sprinkler that exists out in the, one of the grow areas. There are 20 sprinklers, as I said, to be spread throughout the property. And those sprinklers will be installed around the material bins to manage dust and whatnot. And we explain in the plan how and when, how often those sprinklers would be used, under what conditions they would need to be used and whatnot. This is a detail of the area closer to the corner of Hillside and the Cole property. We're showing additional plantings to be installed along the Cole property. They're not, we're not interested in a fence. They are interested in additional evergreen plantings, and so that will be installed here. And the area where the new catch basin be and tying into the town's drain system is here. They need to, they need to go under, there's a stone wall here which is historic. They'll go underneath that stone wall with that new catch basin catching stormwater as it comes in this direction and enters into the town system. I know there's been some discussion about firewood and firewood delivery trucks and how they work. This is a firewood delivery truck with a, what they call a walking floor. Basically, the truck would back into the wood barn. It's loaded. And this is a, it's, it's an ingenious contraption. I do have access to a YouTube video that will show more specifically how it works. But this can be fully loaded. The floor sits on a top, on top of a set of hydraulic. The floor sits on a top, on top of a set of hydraulic moving sort of fingers. And the floor is moved out one foot. Those fingers then slide back underneath as they catch, they come back forward and they come back and catch. And slowly, one foot at a time, material is discharged off the back. And so they can discharge it out the back. So firewood can be discharged quietly and easily into the back, into the barn where it can be stored and maintained. And it's done quietly. There's no, no raising and lowering of the dump level and whatnot. This is some, some information. It's difficult to see, but the notion is that when they initially, when the dump trucks are initially loaded with wood inside the barn, that there's a clattering noise with respect to that as the initial one or two or three loads of wood from a bobcat are poured into the back of the dump truck with the metal bottom. The idea is that we, they will install sort of a three-quarter inch thick rubber matting, generally what's found in gyms, hockey rinks, thick, sound absorbing. They'll, will be placed on the bottom of the dump trucks. It's actually good for the maintenance of the dump trucks because it will enhance the life for the dump trucks, but that will reduce the noise for the initial loading of trucks that would be inside the, inside the barn. Just showing a series of the existing lights. And as I put these photos together, I, I failed to identify which ones were which, so that's Josh to help me sort of with the.
The one on the left is facing the wood barn. That's on the, on the right peak of our main showroom.
Okay. And the one on the left.
That's just a regular floodlight, that one there.
Okay.
But there is on the, on the opposite side to mirror the same peak is that the other light on the right-hand side.
Is this one?
Yep. And then that's off the, the spotlight that you showed earlier, Ned, it's in the peak just above that photo. No, yeah, right there, it's to the left. It's just off the frame there.
Just off of that.
Yeah.
And those, the, and then the rest are smaller at lower levels, some spots, some under, just showing all of the lights on the, on the various buildings. Obviously, the plan is to direct, make sure that those are directed in such a way as they do not direct out into neighboring properties. And so, you know, we think that that is being done in a reasonable basis today, and we think that, you know, the, subject to suggestions from the board as to how they might be changed. I think that's, that works pretty fine, pretty well. Last slide deals with parking. We're proposing 34 spaces on the site. We use the calculations generally as required under the town's bylaw for various uses. There are a total of 34. I think it's 10 along here, seven here, another set here, and then parking for trucks in the evening. It, the, it is a low-volume traffic and parking activity with the exception of occasional high-volume activities such as sale of Christmas trees. There are occasions when parking is necessary on street and they use detail officers from the Milton Police to help direct and locate parking. But for the most part, for, for the purposes of landscaping, for their routine nursery business, I think 34 spaces is more than adequate to cover any visitor parking, any employee parking, and the, and the parking of trucks and other vehicles on the site. And with that, it's a very brief, sweet, to the point. There's a lot of material that was presented in the written material and other materials with it. And I think it's more important at this point to hear comments from others and respond to comments and questions from the board at this point. So thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to responding.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have a couple of letters. One from Stephen Davis who is negative about this application. And I don't know if he's planning to, to attend, but if he did, I mean, the people who testify, we anticipate the ability to ask them questions. And for people who write letters, obviously, we can't ask them questions. And, and the second letter is, is, is an unsigned document from, supposedly from Chris and Tina Tevens, but whether it, you know, I would, I would hope that if people submit letters, they, they sign them so we know that it's the final copy and it's something that they in fact want to be part of the public record. And we will make these part of the public record. And again, but they should be signed. And if the people writing the letters care to, care to appear, that would be fine. And, but, but we will receive letters and our next meeting is on the 20th. Second. So we will certainly receive letters through the 22nd, through the time of our meeting on the 22nd. And there will be, on the 22nd, the meeting, the hearing will be still open and I'm, we will take further public testimony. But as I say, rather than go into the details of things like the wood barn and the wood operation and the amount of parking and many matters that we, we have questions about, let's hear from, let's hear from the public and see what their issues, if any, are. So that's what we're going to do. Anyone who would like to speak can raise their hands and I will recognize them, and they may do so. Yes, sir, Mr. Dunn.
Good evening, Stephen. My name is Matthew Dunn. I represent Philip Joenning and John Rowe. They reside at 23 Parkwood in Milton. I prepared a brief summary of their position with regards to the present application for the board that I'd, I'd asked to submit at this time. That'd be, I'm not sure.
Did you make any copies?
Yeah, I made a bunch. I didn't realize there was going to be this many people here today, but pass out what I have, and I'm happy to provide copies, additional copies, you know, when I can tomorrow or.
Well, get some to the board. Get one to Emily.
Given Mr. Corker a copy. And I'd just like to go through some of the points that are made in the memo because they give a, basically a, a general overview of my client's position, which is basically that the, the application is deficient in a few areas as it presently stands and it needs some more information in order to have this board make a, a fully informed decision on its, the special permit application. So if you'll excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase throughout, but I'll be following along in the, in the memo, just so the people at home and the people who don't have a copy can just follow the, the position of Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rowe. Again, they've identified in the application, which I reviewed, you know, I've been a, a part of this process for over a year at this point through the, the contemplation of the bylaw amendment, its enactment, and now the, the application submitted by Thayer under it. So intimately familiar with the requirements. And so as you'll see in the, in the memo, what I've done is, is basically spelled out what the, each requirement is in each section of the bylaw, included what has been presented by Thayer in its application to date, and try to provide an analysis of one information is, is lacking in the application's present form and in the intent that we can flush that out. Because I know that the main intent of the bylaw was to reintroduce landscaping, commercial use in part to Thayer Nursery, and in doing so to, to provide some protection to this bucolic residential Scotswood neighborhood. And to try to find that balance, I, I recognize that the planning board has a difficult job. And there are a number of, of requirements that are in here that provide, that ask whether the call for specific plans, rules, and specifications to be outlined. And that's important because there's a provision in the, in the bylaw amendment that's, that talks about how those specific rules and regulations are going to be incorporated into the terms of the special permit, which in turn is important for the neighbors because it's going to give them a base to, to monitor Thayer's activities on the property and to be able to enforce whatever special permit is issued to make sure that there is that, that harmony exists between the commercial and the residential. So with that sort of long-winded introduction, I'll, I'll get into it. Stated purpose of the zoning amendment, and this is a quote, "to make the physical layout and day-to-day operations of each such landscaping business reasonably compatible with the interests of abutters and nearby residents and their rights to reasonably, reasonable quiet enjoyment of their properties." And that's set forth in the first paragraph of the zoning amendment. Towards that end, it requires an applicant in Thayer Nursery in this case to provide and require enforceable specifics for the layout and operations of each of its landscape, of the landscaping business in order to control dust, noise, light, and odor, and to promote safety, to reduce inconvenience to the neighboring residents, and to establish reasonable limits on the amount of infrastructure, equipment, and operations. In this case, just as a way of background, Thayer seeks a special permit in order to authorize and expand certain commercial landscaping, construction, and firewood sales business on its property. And those are, those are the properties at 217, 237, 270 Hillside Street, as well as 0 and 24 Forest Street in, in Milton. And just so we're all on the same page, I'm going to be referring to, to those collective properties as the subject property of this application. So to introduce these commercial landscaping, construction, and firewood sales businesses to the subject property, which were prohibited by the Board of Appeals in two decisions, the first one on September 26, 2013, and the second on February 11, 2014. In the application, just to spec, to flesh out what's going to be happening here, Thayer seeks the planning board's authorization, number one, to expand its existing retail sales operations to include a farmers' and artisans' market selling items and food created and grown off-site, introduce a snow and ice removal business and vehicles and equipment associated with it that have never operated on the premises. And Thayer looks to utilize this amendment in order to obtain zoning relief that's, that's unavailable under any other zoning provision or under the Dover Amendment. There's been a ruling in the Norfolk Superior Court by Judge Davis that it's not entitled to that protection or that exemption under MGL 48, Section 3. So the relief they're seeking is, is, would be, if at all, available through the existing zoning amendment. So in assessing Thayer's application, it's important to keep in mind that the limited activities and uses that can be authorized under the, the zoning amendment that we're talking about here. That is, the activities for which the planning board can authorize by special permit under the zoning amendment are expressly limited to only those which were conducted on the property in 2012. Moreover, the zoning amendment restricts the size of those limited activities to a level no greater than the level that the activity existing in 2012, unless there is a reasonable showing that a greater level would be consistent with the purpose of the zoning amendment and cause no adverse effect on abutters or nearby residents. So the onus to do that, to, to show, first, Thayer would need to show that the activity was existing on the property in 2012. And then if they want to, that's, that's a baseline for the amount of activity that can be done there. And then if they want to increase the activity that was occurring in 2012, they have to make that showing that I just discussed. And there's been no showing of that. Simply put, the zoning amendment does not allow any applicant to introduce a new activity on the property and expressly limits the existing activities to the level at which the applicant was conducting them in 2012. Again, that's, that can be found in, in the second paragraph of the, of the zoning amendment. In this case, Thayer's application provides no information whatsoever about the size and scope of the retail sales and commercial landscaping, construction, and firewood sales businesses on the subject property in 2012. It also provides no evidence whatsoever that it ever operated a snow and ice removal business there. Without this baseline information, which is required under the zoning amendment, it would be impossible for the planning board to determine the appropriate size and scope of the commercial activities that Thayer seeks to undertake on the subject property through its special permit application. There's a provision in the bylaw that discusses plans, rules, and specifications. The zoning amendment requires Thayer Nursery to submit to the planning board plans, rules, and specifications, and other descriptive texts and materials in a form suitable for the recording by a registered professional engineer. That can be found in paragraph four of the zoning amendment. Without question, this is the most important mechanism for accomplishing the stated objective of the zoning amendment, which is to make Thayer Nursery's landscaping business reasonably compatible with the interests of abutters and nearby residents and the rights, and the rights to reasonably quiet and enjoy their properties. Because the plans, rules, and specifications approved by the planning board are incorporated into the special permit by reference and become enforceable requirements, terms and conditions of it. That can be found in paragraph six. Despite the significance of this requirement, the current plan submitted by, or the current application submitted by Thayer Nursery does not come close to satisfying the specific requirements mandated by the zoning amendment. The zoning amendment requires Thayer to submit to the planning board a plan that shows the existing topography, building structures, utility services, water and sewer lines, wells, drainage infrastructure, driveways, landscape, natural features, and areas of use. This is called for in paragraph number 4A of the amendment. This plan must be in a form suitable for recording by a registered professional engineer. Thayer's application does not satisfy this requirement. Rather, the plan that Thayer has submitted with its application only shows existing buildings, structures, driveways, landscape, natural features, and area of use. Nothing evidenced the existings of the, of the topoc, of the topography, utility services, water and sewer lines, wells, and drainage infrastructure, although there was a, a photograph that Mr. Corker presented, or a series of photographs that presented the, the well or the, the drainage ditch that was installed on the property. An appreciation of all these features is essential for the planning board to assess the sufficiency of the site changes proposed in Thayer Nursery's application. For example, without understanding the grade and slope of the subject property in relation to that of a butters, it is impossible for the planning board to assess whether the location and size of the proposed fence, sound wall, or vegetation will truly mitigate the effects of Thayer Nursery's commercial activities. As any decision of, of Thayer Nursery's application requires the planning board to fully understand these factors, the planning board should order Thayer Nursery to provide it with a more detailed plan showing all of the existing conditions on the subject property as a precondition to further considering Thayer's application. And really, what, what, what we're concerned about here is the, is the, is the drainage and the, the soundproofing, the effect of the sound and dust on abutting properties. I'll get into the drainage plan now. The zoning amendment requires Thayer Nursery to submit to the planning board a plan that accounts for drainage and drainage infrastructure for the effective control of stormwater from the subject property. Now, we've seen a, we've seen the photographs, but we haven't seen, we haven't seen a plan. Moreover, Thayer, Thayer Nursery must show that its drainage Moreover, Thayer Nursery must show that its drainage measures will not cause adverse drainage impacts on neighboring properties, and will not increase water flows into neighboring properties, and will not create ponding on neighboring properties. These are all set forth in paragraph 4D of the zoning amendment. Thayer has made no such showing. At a bare minimum, Thayer must submit to the planning board a detailed drainage plan prepared by a professional engineer that illustrates and explains features, how the features proposed in it will contain and control the flow of water into neighboring properties. As drainage from the subject property is a longstanding problem that has caused substantial damage to Mr. Joenning and Mr. Rose's home and property, in which it's actually, it's getting worse, the planning board should order Thayer Nursery to provide it with a more detailed drainage plan as a precondition to further considering Thayer Nursery's application. Now with respect to the landscaping plan. The zoning amendment requires that Thayer Nursery provide the planning board with a plan depicting landscaping along the lot lines. Again, the intent of the provision is to compel Thayer Nursery to demonstrate that its commercial activities can be done in a manner that is reasonably compatible with the interest of abutters and nearby residents, and their rights to reasonably quiet enjoyment of their properties. This requires Thayer Nursery to take all necessary measures needed to buffer noise and dust emanating from the subject property to abutters and nearby residents, including but not limiting Thayer Nursery's erection of sound buffering walls or fences at least 15 feet from the lot lines of the subject property. This is required in Section 4E of the zoning amendment. The specifications for all fences, walls, and sound buffering landscaping structures must be included as part of the plan that Thayer Nursery submits to the planning board. While Thayer Nursery's plans depict the landscaping along the property's lot lines, including locations of fences and vegetation, it's provided no evidence that these measures will truly buffer the noise and dust emanating from the subject property. If the planning board truly intends to protect the rights of abutters and nearby residents, then it would require Thayer Nursery to produce a plan that quantifies just how much mitigation measures, the mitigation measures proposed by it will truly buffer noise created by vehicles, equipment, and activities used on the subject property. Without this pertinent information, the planning board should not issue any decision on Thayer's application. With regards to the operations, Thayer Nursery is to submit to the planning board a plan that specifically illustrates the driveways, the loading and unloading areas for onsite vehicular movement of trucks and other equipment used on the subject property. This is required in Section 4F of the zoning amendment. This plan must specify procedures for trucks making deliveries and for the onsite operation of trucks and other equipment used on the subject property. The plan must also specify loading procedures for materials to be taken off-site for use in Thayer Nursery's landscaping business. Further, this plan must also specify hours of operation for loading and unloading operations and other use of noisy equipment. Paragraph number 7E of the zoning amendment sets forth the hours of operation for various activities proposed in Thayer's application. For example, it limits the time that Thayer can load or unload noisy equipment to the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. The zoning amendment prohibits any loading or the use of noisy equipment on Sundays. The hours proposed in Thayer's present application exceed those set forth in the zoning amendment and exceed those that were undertaken in 2012. In fact, these hours would be more, the hours proposed by Thayer with regards to its operation of the commercial activities would be more accommodating than even those presently permitted in commercially-zoned districts in Milton, and are not allowed under the existing zoning amendment. Furthermore, Thayer Nursery's application provides only broad procedures for trucks making deliveries and for the onsite operation of trucks and other equipment used on the subject property. It provides similarly broad procedures for loading materials to be taken off-site for use in the landscaping business. The zoning amendment calls on Thayer to submit specific rules with respect to these matters. This is essential to any planning board decision, again, because such rules are incorporated into the special permit by reference and become enforceable requirements, terms, and conditions under it. Without them, there is nothing to govern these activities or to measure these activities. Accordingly, the planning board should take no further action on Thayer unless and until it submits this specific information. With regards to its parking plan, the zoning amendment calls on Thayer to provide the planning board with a parking plan that provides reliable analysis of the number of parking spaces needed for its business operations. This plan must show that the parking spaces for customers, employees, trucks when not in use, and other vehicles when not in use. Moreover, it must depict the storage spaces for other equipment used by Thayer Nursery on the subject property. The plan must show garages and illustrate layouts within them for parking and storage. This is all required under Section 4G of the zoning amendment. Thayer's present application does not satisfy this requirement. It merely recites the parking requirements set forth in the zoning bylaws for residential or retail uses. This does not account for all of the other uses that Thayer Nursery proposes to undertake on the subject property, including but not limited to the farmers' and artisans' market, the Christmas tree sales, the stone kitchen, and other events. Such uses have a long and documented history of drawing large crowds to the subject property whose attendees park on the narrow surrounding streets because of insufficient parking on the premises. As such a condition poses a threat to the public's safety, health, and welfare, the planning board should require Thayer Nursery to submit a detailed parking plan prepared by a professional engineer that takes into account all of the proposed uses contemplated in Thayer's application. As for building plans, the zoning amendment requires Thayer Nursery to provide the planning board with a plan that shows all business buildings, storage bins, dumpsters, and other business structures on the subject property. This plan must include dimensions, square footage, location, setback from lot lines, elevations, utilities, and specification of business uses for which the interior space of any building or structure located on the subject property will be put. Again, Thayer's application does not satisfy this requirement. It has not submitted a plan that depicts any of these requirements. Instead, the information about business structures on the subject property is set forth in a narrative. This is insufficient because it does not illustrate the proximity of each activity to each other. For example, Thayer's narrative does not explain the 1,000-gallon diesel refueling tank is situated in the very same building where engaged is in welding activities and where it also stores several tons of kelp and dried firewood. Such obvious fire hazards should be known to by the planning board in advance of making any decision to Thayer Nursery's application. Now with respect to business activities, the zoning amendment requires Thayer to provide the planning board with a list that sets out the business activities for which it will engage in on the subject property. This list must identify any sales to be conducted there and include a description of each activity and its anticipated use of facilities on-site, together with anticipated extent, times, and dates of activities. This can be found in the zoning amendment in paragraph 4I. Thayer Nursery's application satisfies this requirement. However, it should again be noted that Thayer has never utilized the subject property as a base for any snow or ice-removal business. As such, it seeks to introduce this use to the premises using the special permit process provided in the zoning amendment. This is impermissible. Section 4J of the zoning amendment calls for a mitigation plan. Thayer Nursery has to provide the planning board with a plan that specifies the proposed measures it will take on the subject property to control noise, dust, offensive odors and offensive odors created by business operations from infringing upon the reasonable quiet enjoyment of abutters and nearby residents. Its present plan does not specifically identify the likely sources of noise, dust, and odors, and it must specify the effective measures that Thayer will take to reduce and control them. Not only does Thayer not specify each likely source of noise, dust, and odor, it also fails to provide any evidence whatsoever that the effective measures that it does propose in its application will actually function to reduce and control the noise, dust, and odor emanating from the subject property. Without some kind of proof that Thayer's proposals actually work, there is no way that the planning board can conclude that the day-to-day operation of the subject property will not infringe upon the rights of abutters and nearby residents. This is specifically required and is the purpose of the zoning amendment. Accordingly, the planning board should take no further action to Thayer's application is supplemented to include this specific information. With regards to the lighting plan that's called for in Section 4K of the zoning amendment, it requires Thayer Nursery to provide the planning board with a plan that shows all exterior lighting on the subject property. This provision is intended to provide Thayer with reasonably necessary low-level lighting while minimizing light spillover into neighboring properties and adjoining streets. Thayer's application does not presently satisfy that requirement. No plan has been submitted to the planning board that quantifies the intensity of the lighting used on the subject property or measures the light spillover onto neighboring properties and adjoining streets. Again, the information is necessary for the planning board to assess whether the day-to-day operations of Thayer's subject property will infringe on the rights of abutters and nearby residents. With respect to the street improvement plan called for in Section 4K of the zoning amendment, Thayer is to provide the planning board with a plan that illustrates the street improvements that it will undertake at Thayer's sole expense to permit safe access by trucks to and from the subject property. Thayer's present application does not satisfy that requirement. Instead, it merely states that Thayer will repair and improve, as needed and in a timely manner, any damage to the streets, shoulders, and adjoining properties. This completely ignores the fact that the commercial operations proposed on the subject property will involve a substantial amount of large truck traffic along the narrow and winding roads of the Scotswood neighborhood, an area with very limited sidewalk access. As such, large vehicle traffic could threaten the public's health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, the planning board should require Thayer Nursery to submit an impact study that gauges the effects of this truck traffic on the neighborhood roadways and proposes street improvements that will mitigate this impact. With regards to the list of vehicles that was called for in Section 4N of the zoning amendment, it obliges Thayer Nursery to provide the planning board with a list that identifies the number and type of vehicles which are in use on the subject property on July 1, 2013. In the event that Thayer intends to increase the number of vehicles from that base number, it must identify them to the planning board and provide it with an explanation as to why they are necessary for Thayer's business operations. Thayer's application does not satisfy this requirement. It has not provided the planning board with any list that complies with paragraph 4N, to my knowledge. Accordingly, that list should be provided before any action is taken on its application. Section 4O of the zoning amendment prohibits Thayer Nursery from using loudspeakers or playing amplified music on the subject property. It also mandates that all vehicles and equipment used by Thayer Nursery on the subject property be shut off and not left idle while not in use. Despite this clear requirement that's specifically set forth in the zoning amendment itself, Thayer's application seeks the planning board's permission to use loudspeakers and play amplified music on the subject property during events. Again, the zoning amendment prohibits this, and this planning board should deny that request. With regards to the firewood plan that's called for in Section 4P of the zoning amendment, it requires Thayer Nursery to provide the planning board with a plan that shows the specifics and procedures for its receipt, storage, and delivery of firewood from the subject property. This plan must explain how Thayer Nursery will ensure the safe and reasonably quiet deliveries will be made to the subject property, and delivered firewood be safely stored on it, and the firewood will be loaded on the subject property and delivered off-site in a safe and quiet manner. Now, there was, Attorney Corcoran did present some photographs of the trucks that Thayer proposes to use. But this would be, what the bylaw calls for, again, is specifics. Thayer's application provides only broad procedures for its receipt, storage, and delivery of firewood on the subject property. The zoning amendment calls for Thayer Nursery to submit specific rules with respect to these matters. This, too, is essential in any planning board decision because, again, these rules are incorporated into the special permit by reference and become requirements, terms, and conditions of it. Without them, there is nothing to govern or gauge these activities. Accordingly, the planning board should require Thayer Nursery to supplement its application with this information. Thayer's application proposes that the planning board also allow, again, to sell snow and ice-removal services. The zoning amendment itself does not allow it to do so. As stated in paragraph two of the zoning amendment, an applicant cannot introduce a new activity on its property that was not undertaken by it in 2012. In this case, Thayer has not presented any evidence that it utilized the subject property to sell snow and ice-removal services in 2012. Consequently, it cannot obtain a special permit under the present zoning amendment to introduce this new use. Section 4R of the zoning amendment prohibits Thayer Nursery from extending the scope of items sold on the subject property and hours of operation for its sales office beyond their 2012 levels. Again, in order to determine whether Thayer Nursery can comply with this requirement, it is necessary for it to provide the planning board with an inventory, sales report, or other accounting records from 2012. However, this information was not included in Thayer's present application. Without it, the building commissioner cannot assess whether Thayer Nursery has complied with the provisions of the zoning amendment, in addition, or the special permit. In addition, the hours of operation for Thayer Nursery's sales office exceed their 2012 levels, the hours that are proposed in its present application, as well as those outlined in the zoning amendment itself. Therefore, the planning board must reduce those hours to the 2012 levels or those called for in the zoning amendment. It also requires Thayer Nursery to provide it with an inventory, sales reports, and other accounting information for its activities in 2012 in order to create that baseline that's called for in the zoning amendment. Now with regards to some of the requirements set forth in paragraph seven of the zoning amendment, it requires Thayer Nursery to explain how its landscaping business will comply with several other requirements. As will be explained, Thayer's application fails to provide adequate explanation. First is storage, loading, and unloading of materials. Under Section 7A of the zoning amendment, Thayer Nursery must demonstrate that it has suitable storage facilities on the subject property for the safe storage of non-perishables used in its business, including mulch, loam, stone dust, and gravel. And again, I recall Attorney Corcoran identifying the storage bins that were proposed. To clarify, though, the storage bins must be required in an area 40 feet from a lot line of the subject property so as to avoid any adverse impacts of dust, odors, noise to neighbors and neighboring residents. Thayer must also show that it utilizes effective measures, including covering or enclosure of dusty or odorous materials, the use of safe, efficient, reasonable, quiet loading and unloading procedures, and buffering with vegetation-noise-reducing walls and fences. With respect to demonstrating and simple imitation of safe, efficient, and reasonably quiet loading and unloading procedures, there is nothing in the record that evidences that any of the measures proposed by Thayer will actually mitigate the noise generated or anticipated to be generated by its commercial activities. So what we're looking for is some sort of information that quantifies how the proposed mitigation measures will reduce the noise, dust, and odors that is anticipated to emanate from the subject property. Now with regards to the storage of fertilizer, the zoning amendment requires that Thayer have suitable storage facilities for the safe storage of fertilizer, other chemical products, fuel, and oil used in the landscaping operations. However, this is actually a topic that is governed by the Massachusetts Board of Fire Prevention Regulations. Those can be found at 527 CMR, Section 1, at sequence. Accordingly, whether or not Thayer complies with provisions, with this provision of the zoning amendment rests solely with the Milton Fire Department and the State Fire Marshal. The planning board is simply preempted from certifying that Thayer's complies with this portion of the zoning amendment. As such, it cannot issue a special permit to Thayer Nursery unless and until its application includes all necessary permits required under Massachusetts law for the safe storage of fertilizer, chemicals, fuel, and oil. Now, section, paragraph 7D of the zoning amendment, again, limits the numbers and types of vehicles that Thayer can use on the subject property to those used in July of 2012. As such, Thayer Nursery's application must provide the planning board with this historic information, i.e. that what vehicles were actually used on the property in July of 2012. I haven't seen any of that. I haven't seen that as part of their application. Without that information and evidence as to the impact of that number on a Without that information and evidence as to the impact of that number on abutters and nearby residents, there is no way for Thayer Nursery to make a reliable showing that a higher number of vehicle types in 2015 would have no adverse impact that would result in reduction in overall noise. This is required in Paragraph 7D of the zoning amendment. Without such a showing, the planning board cannot approve Thayer Nursery's current application. Section 7E of the zoning amendment requires Thayer Nursery to show that there will be a safe and convenient movement of vehicles on the subject property. This also obligates Thayer Nursery to present enforceable procedures to the planning board that will govern trucks making deliveries to the subject property, the operation of vehicles and equipment on-site, loading of materials and equipment, and trucks making off-site deliveries. Thayer's present application does not satisfy this requirement. Once again, Thayer's application provides only broad procedures for on-site traffic, loading, and deliveries. As stated above, Thayer Nursery must submit specific rules with respect to these matters, particularly where they affect noise levels and fumes for abutters and nearby neighbors. As such, the planning board should take no further action on Thayer's application unless and until it produces specific information that's required under this section of the zoning amendment. Now, with regards to outside truck traffic, Paragraph 7E of the zoning amendment contemplates Thayer Nursery's receipt of truck deliveries and limits the hours when they can occur to weekdays between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Furthermore, this provision obligates Thayer Nursery to provide the planning board with a truck route which trucks shall use to make deliveries to the subject property during these designated hours. Implicit in this requirement is that Thayer's proposal for truck deliveries evidences that the health, safety, and welfare of Milton residents sharing the same narrow roadways is protected. This should, at the very least, require Thayer Nursery to submit a professional traffic study with its application which explains the impact that the proposed truck deliveries will have on abutters and nearby residents and sets forth a proposal to mitigate any adverse effects. None has been provided, and to my knowledge, none has ever been done. Accordingly, the board should take no further action on Thayer's application until it submits such a traffic study. Now, with regards to -- this all leads to, again, creating specific plans, rules, and specifications that can be used as a baseline for both Thayer and for the neighbors to gauge compliance with whatever special permit is issued by this board. The zoning amendment mandates Thayer Nursery's compliance with each and every one of the requirements set forth in it. However, the only enforcement mechanism mentioned in it rests with the building commissioner, who is the only individual charged with authority to submit an application to the Board of Appeals seeking to revoke Thayer's special permit for noncompliance with the requirements of the zoning amendment. From there, it provides that the Board of Appeals can only revoke Thayer Nursery's special permit in the event of a material violation which Thayer Nursery has not promptly cured after receiving notice from the building commissioner. The zoning amendment does not specify what a material violation is. It does not specify how long Thayer has to cure the material violation. It does not specify when the building commissioner must submit an application to the Board of Appeals if it is not cured. Accordingly, the planning board, in considering Thayer's application and in drafting any decision on this matter, should specifically identify, to the best of its ability, what constitutes a material violation and set definitive deadlines for when Thayer must cure the violation and when the building commissioner must submit an application to the Board of Appeals if it is not cured. In light of these shortcomings, and I understand, and Mr. Juwening and Mr. Rowe understand that this is a process and that this is an opportunity for us to present our concerns to the board, in its current form, the planning board should take no further action on Thayer's request until the information that's been requested by Mr. Juwening and Mr. Rowe is submitted and evaluated by the board.
Right. Well, you have made a number of points, and I personally agree with some of them. I haven't done a checklist, but I think that you make some good points. And I think that what we need to do is have the applicant respond to this listing. You don't have to do it now. I mean, you can do it now if you're prepared to do so, but there are, you know, there are things like the vehicles in use in 2012, the level of operations in 2012, which we don't have information about. And I think, Mr. Dunn, that you've done a credible job here of raising issues, and I think that the applicant has to look at these, and if they feel that they've satisfied them -- because you're right, the zoning basically provides that the applicant is supposed to give these little plans on all these things, and that the board will read the plan, and once it determines each plan, each of these numbered plans that go from A4, I guess it would be 4C through S. A ton of plans that, you know, that tell us what you're going to do and how you're going to do it, and make it enforceable so we can attach it to our special permit. And you do the work. We don't have to write the plan ourselves. And I'm afraid that the -- we're clearly going to have to get -- if we're going to get enforceable measures, we're going to have to do some -- some work's going to have to be done here in certain areas. I mean, certainly, the applicant's application is better than it initially was, but it's far from perfect. So I think that we should get a response to this letter because this is a thoughtful letter, and I think a thoughtful response will advance matters. Hang on.
I think the -- I agree with everything you're saying, but as well, I think the response is just merely a response to the application under the bylaw anyway. I mean, these are the requirements that are set forth.
Well, admittedly, but respond to these because at some point, we're going to have to -- we're going to have to go through all these things and determine each one ourselves. And, you know, at the very least, we've got an issue here presented. If they think that the particular comment is not valid, they should say so and say why. Because, you know, I mean, things like they weren't doing snow and ice removal operations in 2012. I mean, they either were or they weren't, but we've got an issue here, and we're going to have to make sure that we make a reliable determination on all these things. So we're going to want a response from the applicant, whether it's from you, Mr. Corcoran, or from the applicant, preferably from you, since Mr. Dunn would probably appreciate that.
Thank you.
And do you have any comments about that procedure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Mr. Dunn's thoughtful work. I wish I'd received it before the start of the hearing this evening so that it would have been an opportunity to have responded or understood more fully the specifics of each of the items requested. I'm not sure that I'm prepared to respond in detail to each of the items tonight.
Give it some thought and respond as you may because we're going to have to deal with all these things, and certainly, we want to know why the applicant feels like these are not -- these issues are not issues. So.
Again, I just think that the -- not seeing Mr. Dunn's comments prior, that's -- he made some points that are beyond this, but I would just assess that, you know, 90% of it's part of the article. Paragraph 4, A through S is pretty much his comments.
And I think the application intended to lay out in sort of easy-to-read format how the plan would respond to the requirements of the bylaw. The bylaw is very strict in terms of what it was required, and the intent of the application was to demonstrate how and in each respect, the operations would comply. I understand some of the specific details. Question raised about those, I need to spend some time drilling back into what's in the plan, whether and how it's appropriate to provide additional information and/or respond appropriately where we don't feel additional information would be necessary. So obviously, there's a fair amount of work went into this response. It's going to require a fair amount of work to respond to it fairly, and so what I would propose is to get something back to the board in advance of the hearing in two weeks that the board can review prior to -- I will share a copy with Mr. Dunn in advance of that.
I'm sorry. What's going to happen in two weeks?
Well, two weeks from now, we're back for continuation of the hearing.
Unless you want more time.
Well, I think in the -- at this point.
Might as well be here in two weeks and see how we're doing.
I'm not requesting more time because I think between now and two weeks from now, we can answer a lot of the questions and concerns that have been raised, either with some initial detail if necessary or justifications to why we don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
So I think in two weeks, we can turn something around that will be -- will go a long way towards responding to the questions and concerns that are raised by Mr. Dunn. It would be helpful to understand if there are other specific issues and concerns that the board may have so that we can respond as well if there are other issues or details.
Well, we'll see what we can do. Let's hear from the --
Just last point because it's just the same topic. We're kind of hashing through. It would be nice to just have -- I don't see that you didn't address some of these things, but I mean, it would be nice to go through, again, Section 4, A through S, and say, for instance, Item G, parking plan, we consider drawing, and I can't see what that's identified as X, as, you know, meeting the requirements of Section G parking plan.
Kind of a checklist?
Kind of a checklist of where you think the items here are covered. Some of them are covered, but.
I think a significant number of them are covered. And, you know, the question raised with regard to the storage of the diesel fuel, that the state fire marshal was out today inspecting the installation and authorized the department, the fire department, to reissue the permit associated with that. He determined that it was safe. It operates cleanly, efficiently. Diesel fuel is, in fact, the same fuel that is used for home heating. It's simply a different color. They dye it a different color, red, so that if a trucking concern were using heating fuel to drive their trucks and they were testing it, they would determine that they were using illegal fuel because they didn't pay the fuel tax that's required on the state and federal law. It is exactly the same fuel. It is low volatility, and it's been determined to that. But, you know, some more detail may be appropriate. Certainly, a copy of the permit that was reissued today would be helpful. So I think that a significant amount of the -- number of the questions are addressed fairly within the application. I would like to take the time to more specifically respond where and if, in fact, I agree that additional information is necessary, we'll provide it. If not, I'll indicate why I think it's not, so.
And I think, just to reiterate.
Go ahead.
Just to reiterate, it would be very helpful to -- I mean, I think what you're asking for is a response point by point, even if it's C-section, just so that we don't have to hunt around for.
No, I agree with that. It would be helpful to.
So, yeah, some of it's a simple statement. This is addressed on Plan X or Y. But just thinking, and I'm not topping on parking plan because I don't think that's the most significant issue going on here, but behind that, you might have something like how you come up with the 34 spots that are, you know, I'm sure there's the highway transportation engineers have a thing that says, you know, X business, whether it's a church or a restaurant, requires for so many square feet, you should have X amount of parking spots, just where they come up, came with, just so that you do one.
Well, we came up with it based on what the town's zoning bylaws generally require for parking, and, you know, maybe that needs to be more carefully allocated as to which uses are used for what, based on what square footage of this building or that.
That would be helpful. Here's one of my questions, so it would be helpful to understand that.
And one of my questions is on the hours, so I would take another look at the hours as laid out in the actual zoning as opposed to the hours that are laid out in the application. I would take a very careful look at those.
I was -- I tried to be pretty careful in that regard, but if there's some discrepancies in there, obviously, the zoning bylaw is -- it has to be compliant, so there was no intent to do something more than was allowed. I know that those -- we fought hard over what those hours should be when the zoning bylaw was drafted and enacted.
We don't presently have any information on the 2012 levels, do we, as far as?
You may not.
Limits of operation time, limits of number of vehicles, that type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, recently, just the past four or five days ago, I had a chance meeting with the building inspector, who's also a friend. I was upstairs, and he said he wishes to come before the board to discuss his visitation potential at the site. I'm just wondering whether perhaps Bill should just talk to him, see if it would be good for him to come at the next meeting, Bill, or in the future, but I'd leave to your discussion how to go about it.
Hala.
Okay. Thank you.
My only concern about that, the board can certainly request it, is that I think he's going to discuss issues that have been ongoing with what's happening under current permits. I think it's irrelevant to what's being -- to how -- what is going to be ultimately permitted in accordance with the bylaw. The bylaw expands what's -- allows a reintroduction of uses that are beyond what are currently allowed in the special permits that were issued by the Board of Appeals, and his obligation today is to determine whether and how they're operating in accordance with those permits. That would my only -- my precaution on that would be what would be the purpose beyond talking about whether or not they've been in compliance and how many complaints they've received, he's received, and having to -- how many inspections he's had based on, you know, whether or not the current operations comply or have complied with the determinations of the Board of Appeals. I think it's a separate, completely separate matter, and we caution the board on that.
Just asking you, Alex, the article requires that they have that special permit in place before we look at the special permit to reintroduce the landscape business.
Well, no, it doesn't. It simply says if they had a special permit at one point. That's just a initial step they have to.
They have to have a permit for the nursery business in place.
Something like, yeah, but they do.
And the fact that whether it's in good standing or not, or I know that's a lot of legal terminology, but.
Basically, they're supposed to have some sort of a permit that they've been operating under, and whether or not it's in good standing or not, as I remember it, let me take a look.
It's Section 37D, the greenhouse and nursery.
Paragraph 3.
All right. I got the enlargement of the page here if you want.
Oh. Oh, you're talking about the zoning.
The existing.
Right.
The new article references Section 3A, 4, and 6, and 6 goes further to. goes further to reference-
They can have a special permit, they probably do have a special permit for a nursery.
That's what I'm saying, this, this new article says that they have to have that in place in order to apply for the title.
Yes, all right, okay, yes, it does.
And so if it's-
But I think they do. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, in response to my friend, Mr. Cocklin's remarks, I know that what Mr. Cocklin wants to come, Mr. Prandak, why he wants to come here, I just think if we have Bill talk to him, and Bill can talk to you, I think you might agree that it is an appropriate time for him to come before the board. Thank you.
Well, I mean, we can always limit what he has to say. I mean, he's made lots of observations of the, of the particular site, so you can invite the building inspector, Bill. That would be fine, and the board can ask him questions.
Further public-
What?
Further public discussion?
Oh, well, yes, we've got, I think that Ms. Oldfield has something to say here. No, you're just here to, because you needed a writing service? Because Mr. Johanning had his hand up.
Yeah, he can speak for now, thank you.
All right. Who would like to be heard on this?
I'm sitting here.
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure you have the mic. Good evening. My name is Pamela Lepore, and I have lived at 44 Forest Street for 33 years. I'm the largest abutter of Thayer Nursery on the south side of the property. I first of all want to inform the newer residents of the neighborhood and the town that John Rowe and Joe, Phil Johanning are not alone with their grievances with Thayer Nursery. Abutters as far back as the 1960s have filed complaints with the building inspector and the Board of Appeals regarding excessive noise, dust, and odors, which are a violation to the special permit allowing Thayer Nursery to operate in our residential neighborhood. The Ritekis before John and Phil, the Pillsburys before Melissa Walter, the Tivens, the Davis-Aaron family, along with myself, have appeared before the board many times over the past decades citing these violations. I'd really like to know how much the taxpayers of Milton have paid in legal fees, legal fees for Thayer Nursery's violations. I'm sure that it's substantial. As a residentially zoned district, a special permit was issued to Thayer Nursery to protect neighbors and the residential nature of the area. The landscape portion of the business was allowed only as an accessory use. It is grown without approval to a large commercial industrial enterprise, causing distress and hardship to Abutters. Thayer Nursery now wants another special permit to allow them to operate this business, but records show, just ask the Board of Appeals, Angie O'Prondak, they do not abide by restrictions. Just last month, Mr. Prandak visited the nursery to find an artisan shop, a direct violation of the Board of Appeals orders. The first page of their application seeks to reinforce the landscaping business, but on page three, it mentions seasonal farmers and artisans markets. This is not landscaping. The town of Milton, along with other towns such as Quincy, Braintree, and Hingham, hold farmers' markets in commercial areas, not in residential neighborhoods. They should not be allowed in residentially zoned districts. I think the Lower Mills Farmers Market seems to be filling this need just fine, so retail, jewelry, and accessory stores should not be allowed either. The entire land care yard operation, in other words, all of the commercial industrial operations are sighted along my property. The landscape plan also shows the traffic pattern of this heavy commercial equipment circling around and along my property line. The noise, exhaust, fumes, and constant shaking from this will be devastating to my property, my home, and my peace. All of the loading and offloading of trucks and equipment is proposed for this area as well. I should not be forced to bear the burden of any part of this operation. This activity shouldn't be a burden of any abutter and should be centrally located on the nursery property. There's an area right next to the barn behind the main house that would be away from Abutters, or the two acres behind 237 Hillside Street, there's nearly two acres back there that could accommodate this with a large buffer area. The landscape plan on page five proposes an eight-foot fence from Forest Street ending at the corner of the wood barn. The average height of a dump truck is 10 to 12 feet, and 18-wheel trucks are 13 and a half feet in height. I'm not a landscape architect, but common sense tells me that an eight-foot fence will not obstruct noise or fumes or exhaust from trucks 10 to 13 feet high. And I don't understand why the fence ends at the corner of the barn when trucks will be going back there anyway. A 12-foot fence should be installed the entire length of the property. I know that wind has been mentioned as a concern, but proper installation will prevent that damage. The wood barn, fuel station, and tool shop are another source of noise and fumes and are along my property line as well. And then the lighting plan indicates lights as high as 25 feet, they should be no higher than 15. The existing floodlight on the southern side of the garden center shines onto my property and has for a long, a lot of years. Again, the, the list of vehicles, what type of vehicles, how many are allowed, the plan shows spaces for 14. That sounds excessive. There should be a limit to the trucks and type of equipment allowed. And the setback for parking and storing these vehicles should be at least 50 feet from Abutters to prevent fumes from contaminating their property. There are quiet bobcats on the market, and to be honest, for me, this is the main source of noise that fills my yard most of the year, especially during the summer. If the nursery would replace existing machines with quiet ones, it would alleviate a majority of problems. The proposed special permit at hands shows, at hand shows total disregard to me, my family, and home. No one would want this kind of industrial, commercial activity in their backyard, and not one of the nursery supporters I have spoken to are a direct abutter. I would like to express one more thing, and that is how saddened I am how this dreadful ordeal has divided what was once a peaceful community. As a co-founder of the Hillside Neighborhood Association, a treasurer for 18 years, I dedicated many years to protecting our beautiful, fragile, and historic neighborhood. Friends that I have known for over 30 years and other neighbors have said unkind things about the Abutters, especially John and Phil, when not one of them has called to ask how this has affected us. Sadly, Maggie or Josh, neither one of them have ever called me to discuss my concerns. We are not trying to put Thayer Nursery out of business, but we are trying to protect our homes and live in peace. Thank you.
All right, who else would like to be heard?
I'm a resident at 94 Parkwood Drive. I am not a direct abutter of Thayer Nursery, but I am a neighbor and a friend of Thayer's. And when I walked in the room earlier this evening, a topic of a bed and breakfast was being discussed, and a quick note went by, and it was very funny, about how, when an owner is resident, it's, it's somehow a better operation. It's, they have ownership in the operation, and they want it to be a good component of a neighborhood. Josh and Maggie are resident owners. They live in our neighborhood, and they run this business as a family, and I'm really excited that we're at this point right now because there's a whole new permitting process that's just come on board, and Thayer Nursery is going to be the first applicant. I'm a little bummed out that we didn't have ducks in a row, but this is where we work out the process. I urge you to definitely let Josh and Maggie and their team know which ducks have to be in a row, article something, something for something, and let's get through this. Let's get them permitted to run this business with firewood, with landscaping, because I'm not that experienced a person, but I, I do think that landscaping, which is a summer thing, is congruent with snow removal, which is a winter thing. So I think those are a good partnership, and they always have been, and our records may indicate when we go back that they did run that in 2012. I'm sure you guys will pay close attention to that. I'm really excited because you guys are very sharp. Here's a new rule on the books. Thayer is applying for a special permit. Neighbors have definitely helped elucidate all these points that need to be addressed, sights, sounds, traffic. I think Thayer has done an exemplary job of acknowledging problems that have happened in the past. Let's stop and move forward. They've invested money to stay here in the community. I'd like them to be able to bring their Canton operations, bring their Canton operations back to home base, and use that money to put in that fence. They've already done some drainage work, I guess, there were great pictures, love the cutaway view of the pit. Let's let them, let's permit them after they've addressed the specific articles, and let's let them start making those changes. Let's let them start implementing the right lighting, the, the sprinkler systems, the stalls for the materials, the firewood, and yes, let's figure out how many times the trucks can come through. Let's make sure the trucking companies know that they can only come in after a certain time so that they're not parked on some side road, and I do have to say that there is many times in our neighborhood that, like, if you have a big party, you've got to park on the street, and if you want to really have a great party, you might have a loudspeaker. So I trust my neighbors Maggie and Josh and Thayer Nursery as, as an entity. I even trust the people that work for them to, to be considerate, follow the rules as they're established. They're going to be accountable. I believe they're going to be accountable going forward, and the special permitting process will require them to show up and be accountable, and I know that my neighbors will definitely help us keep them to the letter and the spirit of these rules to control their impact on our neighborhood, but let's not forget that their impact on our neighborhood is pretty phenomenal. Even through all this struggle and stress, they're still responding in a way that's going to address our neighbors' concerns and bring their business to the next level, which will help them succeed in the long run. So I urge you, please, you guys have been really patient, and you've come a long way through this process. Let's get on board here and figure out what their needs in order to get their permit through that process so that they can go ahead and implement those changes and address our needs, so we can move on to new things, but we'll, you'll be back because that's what the permitting process is. They'll be back. Do you have any questions? There was no data in there, just opinion. Thank you very much.
Thanks. You'll be next.
Oh, sorry, forgive me. Let's be relatively quick, though. Hi, Derek Shuttle, 27 Forest Street, direct to butter. First, I think it's been several months since I've been able to sit in front of the board, so thanks for doing this work on behalf of the town, the neighborhood. And first to the, I think to the neighborhood that we're in, I've been in Milton 13 years and in this neighborhood eight years, and I never like to hear about neighbors where division is occurring or there's challenges. It happens, but the one thing I know when I saw it yesterday, or no, Sunday when I was over at Thayer, just looking around and seeing some of the improvements that have been made in order to address some of these problems, and I was pretty impressed with the amount of change that's taken place since the summer. We have four young kids, we have parties periodically. I like to think we don't, we're not that loud, but, you know, what I notice about the neighborhood is we've got two new houses going up, trucks all over the place. So I always caution folks to think, you know, be sure the trucks that you think you're hearing are actually associated with Thayer and not the two houses that are going up. I think actually three houses going up. And in talking to Josh and Maggie and looking at this and understanding the stress that's put on them and their business is non-trivial, and I actually applaud the effort they've put forth to try and comply. It's a tough situation, but, you know, as an abutter and as someone that, you know, again, has young kids that are running around these streets, my concern is not their trucks. If I were one, if, I don't even know if this is the right audience, but I'd be more focused on the houses that are going up and the trucks that are driving around, steady state all the time, who have no care for the neighborhood whatsoever, and really don't care about the landscaping. I'm just putting money in on the sidewalk, they drove right over, actually parked on it. Not the appropriate topic here, but point being, I, I think Thayer is a neighbor, not a business. You know, they've been in this neighborhood quite a long time, not, much longer than eight years I've been here, and very much view them, yes, as a business, but as a neighbor first, you know? They know the names of my kids, they spend a lot of time thinking about what it's like to grow up in this neighborhood and want it to be a good experience. And I do believe that, you know, the, the effort and time they're putting in to comply with the special permitting process is admirable and collaborative, I think, but wanted my voice to be heard and appreciate the effort that this board's putting forth to get to the right answer. It seems like this is quite an odyssey, and much like the last speaker, I would hope we'd get to a place where normal operations could presume. Normal operations could kind of step forward so observation could take place and see if they can comply. And I think then it is up to them to show the neighbors, the direct abutters, the folks that are really invested in this, that they can be good neighbors, not just a business, but be good neighbors, which I think ultimately this is all about that, right? So with that, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Mine is just a question. The, well, I'm not, I'm not going to say, will we be allowed to speak after we see the response from the-
Yes, the, the hearing is going to be, is going to be, will resume. What time are we resuming on the 22nd, Bill?
I'm sorry?
What time are we resuming on the 22nd? 6:45?
Falcone is at 6:45, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, so.
6:45? 7:15.
7:15.
Well, you've got Falcone at 6:45.
Oh, and Falcone may take some time.
Which is why I said 7:15.
Well, maybe it should be 7:30.
Open it at 7:15. Well, if you finish Falcone quickly, if you don't, you can open at 7:15 and continue until thereafter, or at least make mention that you will.
All right.
I just want to make sure that I can-
You can, yeah, well, well, definitely.
Because I want to hear the, the side and the response, so I couldn't intelligently speak this evening based on not having seen the agenda that was posed by Mr. Dunn. No, my name is Dr. Dunn, we're not related at all. I just want, I just want to make that clear because I'm on the opposite side.
Who else? Anyone tonight? That's fine. I do have a couple of things that you, yes, sir.
Question?
Yes, of course you can.
Thank you.
John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. I would just like to say that one of my biggest concerns is compliance with any, any permit that has ever been issued to Thayer and any permit that may be issued in the future. Thayer Nursery has been under cease and desist for their landscaping operations since September 23rd, 2013, and from the wood business since February of, of 2014. They have not complied with those cease and desist orders, and I think what I'd like to present as part of the record, the town of Milton took Thayer Nursery to Norfolk Superior Court to get an injunction demanding that they comply with the cease and desist order, that the- that the ZBA issued in September 2013. The cease and desist order that was issued by Norfolk Superior Court, Judge Wilson, was in June of 2014. And as late as, or as recent as December 4th of 2014, they were found to be in non-compliance again by the building commissioner, and I'd like to submit this letter as part of the I'm not sure that there's any way that Thayer will ever comply with anything the town asks them to do, because in the past, they never have. And I don't see how there's any provision in the zoning, or, you know, it should have the flexibility for you to put provisions in that have stiff penalties for non-compliance. And by stiff, I mean the permit should be revoked permanently if there are any violations. We have a history, and it's proven. It's been to the courts. It's been to Norfolk Superior Court. They've issued a cease and desist injunction, and it continues. The building commissioner, as I said, as recent as December of 2014, sent them another letter. I don't know how this body could issue a special permit to an organization who has time after time after time disregarded every permit or many of the conditions that the town has put in the permits that have been issued to them. Why would anyone expect them to comply with anything that's issued by this body? If you do, you know, I just don't believe a permit should be issued at all simply because of their past behavior and the problems it's caused the town and the neighborhood. So I just hope you take that into consideration. It just seems to me that by issuing a permit, we're rewarding bad behavior. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill, joining, 23 Parkwood Drive. Just to wrap up with what John said, Mr. Corcoran, when he first introduced this whole plan, stated that the Old Fields had not been good neighbors. And I think, expanding on what Pam Lepore just said, the Old Fields have never come to us and asked how we could work together to improve the situation, and Pam Lepore stated that they'd never come to her. So if we want to talk about neighbors and being good neighbors, it might start with some collaboration, which has never occurred. So when people, other neighbors, look at the situation and they say, you know, that we have caused problems or whatever, John and I, and maybe Pam, and maybe the Ruteckis, and maybe the Tevens, and maybe the Coles, you know, maybe they might start by wondering who talks to us, and when do they talk to us? And when do they find out what kinds of problems occur in our lives because of them? And say, how could we get together and resolve these situations short of coming before a town board? And as that has never occurred, and as Mr. Corcoran has admitted that they hadn't been good neighbors, I think we see right away that it's basic consideration for the neighbor that is causing the problem. And not John, and not me, and not Pam, and not Rob, and not Ellen, and not Chris, and not Tina. You know, it's, you know, getting together, talking, working things out, but that, I think that ship has sailed. And again, Mr. Corcoran stated that they had not been good neighbors. That came from their attorney. What can I say? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else at this point? If not, I do have a few things that we might, would be useful to have.
If I may, I just want a brief, clear response to a couple of those last comments. The comments that we just heard have been comments that we've heard for the last year in front of this board, in front of the warrant committee, in front of town meeting. Town meeting trusts overwhelmingly Thayer Nursery's ability to perform in accordance with a special permit that would be granted by this board. I think they voted something like 1,000 to 3 to support the enactment of this bylaw. That's a little facetious. I think three people voted in opposition to the amendment to the bylaw. I was shocked that there was not a standing vote that night. It's generally very difficult to achieve a two-thirds vote on a controversial matter. Town meeting voted, and there was no standing vote. It was overwhelming, the support of the town, and the trust that the town has in the Old Fields' ability to operate under a permit in this regard. I think a substantial part of the issues over time have dealt with whether or not prior permits are issued, were general in nature, specific in nature, how were they violated, whether they were violated. There's been back and forth, litigation, hearings with the Board of Appeals. There's a whole history of difficulty. And so he said, she said, disagreement here, disagreement there. I think a lot of that is history. I understand that bad history is difficult to overcome, and better communication certainly is always an important consideration. But I think it's clear that the action that Town Meeting took in the spring, and the effort that the board put together to draft this bylaw, that there is a significant amount of trust in their ability to move forward under a new permit that would be specifically detailed and specifically identified. We do have some work to do. We will respond accordingly. So I just wanted to set that record clear, because there's a little bit of piling on that goes on from time to time, and I don't think it's appropriate.
All right. A couple of things. You have parking spaces in front of the wood barn, and yet this is, and you have parking spaces in your loading area where you're going to have trucks when they're not in use. And parking trucks in where you're going to be proposing to do your operations, it's going to not be effective. You can't park your trucks there if that's where you're going to do all your business in here. And if the trucks are going to go around like this, these spaces in front of the wood barn would seem to me to be an obstruction also.
I think we can provide a better description of how and when those spaces will be utilized, under what purpose, how they'll be shared for varying uses, and why there will not be the type of concerns that you're, the questions that you're raising, I think are legitimate, but we can respond to that.
It just seems to me that your parking plan is, I mean, you say that you've got enough parking spaces for your visitors, which of course, your customers, which you often do, but you sometimes don't. I mean, there was this last season, there was an event, I guess, but the entire intersection was filled with cars parked on the street, and it was, you never could have gotten a fire engine through there. So I do have a question about the parking. You say that you're going to fix your trucks in the wood barn, but what happens if it's full of wood? Your 150 cords of wood. Where are you going to fix them then? And just, and these are issues that occur to me, but you are proposing to bring in these huge 18, 20-wheelers full of wood, put it into the wood barn, and then use bobcats to load it into dump trucks and take it off-site. And this, you know, it has nothing to do with landscaping. It's a purely commercial activity, and it just adds tremendously to the traffic on the streets, which are not designed for 18-wheelers. In fact, it may be that you have more 18-wheelers delivering wood than you have 18-wheelers delivering nursery products. And I just wonder whether or not conducting the wood operation in that location with that sort of infrastructure is, you know, it is necessary. I mean, if it's necessary, if you can't stay in business because you need this revenue, I guess that's one reason, necessity. But it would seem to me that having a good infrastructure would be useful.
So in your opinion, what's good infrastructure? That's a little too vague to use your words. You like specificity.
What?
So what is good, good infrastructure? What's the definition?
Well, Route 138 would be good.
Can I, it is a.
What?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I think what Alex is getting at is the infrastructure is the roads, and the roads are not really built to support tractor-trailers. I would suggest that the roads are public ways. They're built to support all sorts of tractor-trailers and other vehicles, vehicles that are delivering.
They don't, they don't stay on the road, however.
They come in and they come out. They come in and they come out, and they go, and they happen periodically. We'll provide a more detailed analysis of how many, on a daily or weekly basis, when, what times they arrive, how they arrive, what the route they'll arrive. It's done, it's safe, it's been done for years. It has not been a regi.
You will tell us what you've done in 2012.
Right. And in 2012, there was a vigorous wood business.
But saying it's a public street begs the issue. I mean, there are lots of country streets which do not support large commercial operations, but if there are no large commercial operations on the country streets, then they don't have to support that traffic. And they say it's a public street, and they must support the traffic, whatever the consequences. I don't know if I agree with that.
Well, I think Town Meeting does, and Town Meeting certainly voted to authorize under the bylaw.
I don't think, I think they said there could be a wood operation if the planning board.
If.
Found that it had no adverse effects.
And if there was such a business in existence in 2012 at certain levels, it could be reintroduced at those levels.
If you say that Town Meeting demanded that we authorize a wood operation, I think that you're just plain wrong. And I actually have some acquaintance with the zoning and know that it is entirely permissive upon a showing that it can be done without adverse impact to the neighborhood. So, the other thing that I did notice was that the zoning provides for holiday, Christmas trees and holiday materials, and holiday materials has become giftware in your application. And I don't think, I think we were, when I wrote it, we were referring to wreaths and that sort of greenery that you would use, rather than an assortment of gifts that you could give on the holidays. I don't think that, I think that the, I don't think that we ever intended there to be a retail operation selling general merchandise suitable for giving was ever intended. And I don't think that we probably have that ability to do that. So, those are a few thoughts.
Can I bring up something else that's fairly similar? So we've asked that you tell us what business activities are on the site, which you've done. But in introducing that, and this is page 9I, list of business activities, says Thayer Nursery has been an agribusiness consisting of multiple interests. The following list sets out the business activities for which Thayer seeks a special permit. And the first one is nursery. And I want to call your attention, under the language of the zoning, to one purpose. The first sentence begins, "The purpose of this subsection is to permit the ongoing operations of landscaping businesses." And then two is definition of landscaping business permissible activities. Nursery is not a permissible activity under the definition of landscaping business. Nursery is a permissible activity under the Board of Appeals permit, but you're not seeking a special permit for the nursery activities, because it's not listed as something we can grant a special permit for.
Well, it makes it a lot easier for us then, because my understanding, at least of where Alex sits, is that all of this is now wrapped into this new permit.
Firewood is. Christmas trees and other holiday materials is, and that's actually rather interesting because Christmas trees and boughs holly and wreaths, grown or fabricated elsewhere, I'm obviously quoting, is listed in Section 3A7D. So actually, your Christmas trees and other holiday materials are now covered by both permits.
Correct.
But the nursery operations are not. You have to tell us that the landscaping services under three, they exist on a lot with other uses, including agriculture, greenhouse, nursery, indoor residential. We obviously need to know how the uses are coexisting with each other, but you're not asking for a special permit. My reading of this for the nursery business.
I may agree that they don't have to provide, may or may not have to provide it under the special permit. I just question if the zoning requires them to identify their business activities on site.
I have no problem with identifying the business activities. In fact, they should, and they should probably have the agricultural as well.
Right, I agree.
I'm just saying they can't say they're seeking a special permit for the nursery. Yeah, no, no, no. You have to list all your business activities. It's just that initial thing that says we're seeking a special permit for all of these. You're not seeking the special permit for the stuff that the zoning says we don't have authority over. So, reorganize that.
Couple of points, just that I'd like to ask you to think about or address when you come back with your responses. One is something that was raised and that I had a question about, which is the non-continuous nature of the fence. Just an explanation for it would be helpful. On lighting, I think there's a photometric plan included, and that's hopeful. I would like to understand if there's a, it seems that there's a continuous concern coming out of the neighborhood about lights shining into properties. So I'm not sure if that's being captured by the photometric plan, if there's a way to diffuse or screen that lighting so that it's not going, they're not having to look at the glaring lights onto the property even. That wouldn't be reflected on the photometric plan. I have similar questions about the parking. I think I've already mentioned that. I note a request for a 12-foot fence along the Lepore property line. Would like to just have you respond to that. There was also a mention of state-of-the-art equipment. Perhaps there could be a, just an explanation of when you give us your vehicle list, if you could tell us what year they are, when they're scheduled for replacement, something along those lines, just to give us some feeling on that. And then I would like to just hear, at the next hearing, just some thoughts from the applicant on compliance, just from the standpoint that, as Mr. Corcoran did start this whole process, sort of acknowledging a bad history, I'm not sure we need to dwell on the history, but it would be interesting to hear how the applicant thinks we could put some language in here to help us, or help our town with compliance issues. We may not take your advice, but I'd be interested in hearing just what your thoughts are as far as what that stick could be.
And along with that, just a few more things. I already mentioned the hours. I've gone through and made a chart, so you want to double-check your hours and make sure that there can, what you've proposed is absolutely consistent with the zoning. There's a couple of other specific requirements in there, some of which are on the plan, but you may want to consider a narrative to make it easier to check. Things like fences and walls have to be at least 15 feet from the lot line against, you've shown that on the plan. Landscaping on either side of the fences, I think on the plan, at least in some parts, you're showing it just on one side. So where there's a specific requirement, just make sure that that is addressed, and people reviewing it can easily find that, how you have addressed the specific requirement. people reviewing it can easily find that, how you have addressed a specific requirement.
We're going to need a plan of the other lot also.
Yeah, there is, I think that was included, but we'll resubmit.
It wasn't in the.
I didn't see it.
In any event, if you submitted it, all we need is a copy of it. We didn't get it. On the drainage, it seems to me that the only question I have is if you use a lot of fertilizer and all this stuff is nitrogen-loaded that's being funneled into the town system, I would want to know more about that because the zoning does say that it will be kept on-site if possible. So we, it may have to be, well.
Excuse me, Alex, is it a nitrogen or a phosphorus problem?
I don't know. It might be both.
It's a phosphorus problem.
A phosphorus problem. Could be both, I guess. I don't know. But I'd like to know.
Is it what we're applying to the plant material or is it actual storage of bagged material?
It's not the storage. It's, so you're running, I mean, you're growing stuff. I assume you fertilize the stuff you're growing, and when the water comes through, it probably picks it up.
Just a list of our fertilizer use.
No, that it's not going into the town stormwater drainage system.
No, I mean, if you're giving fertilizer.
Well, I think that if we're spreading it in the growing area, then that's a nursery issue.
Right. It's not that, it's, is it leaching into the town stormwater drainage system? We've got stormwater drainage requirements. We passed zoning bylaw. I don't know how many years ago, but how does, if the fertilizer's overrunning that? Is that what you're asking? Is it too much phosphate or whatever it is going on?
I think that that is much an issue for Joe Lynch and John Thompson in the engineering department, because they're the ones that issue that permit. They issue the permit to tie into the drain system.
But we'd like them to address this.
Or to see the permit.
Right.
Yeah, make reference to that.
Right.
And because if the runoff is loaded with fertilizer, then it needs to be, the measures need to be taken before it gets put into the town system.
And if that's all taken care of in the permit, then we just need to know that.
We just need to see it.
Yeah.
There's no, there is no large-scale storage of fertilizer. It's all in bags? Even the fertilizer used to do the landscape businesses comes in bags? 60-pound?
Forty-five.
Forty?
I think that we've managed to achieve the 9 o'clock cutoff that we were hoping for, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Yeah, you've got a question?
No, a motion to continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing to 7:15.
No, we've already continued the hearing. Okay, we're continuing the hearing until the 8th at 7:15.
27.
And now we have. Of what?
It is the 8th.
27. 27. We have the motion on the table, and all in favor, and we're adjourned.